Started, so I am going to call to order this evening's meeting of the Dallas Planning Commission. It's Thursday, April the 10th at 6:00 PM, and here we are. So may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Newell, Commissioner Spofford is excused, Commissioner Schulte, Commissioner Banford, Commissioner Grow, Commissioner Swanson, and Commissioner Ko-Wash is not present, but a quorum is present. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We had a vigorous meeting in March on the 13th, so I trust everyone's read the minutes, including all of the public testimony that's there. Are there any corrections, omissions to point out, or any other business before we entertain a motion?
Apparently, I discussed mixed-use zoning on the public testimony. I was unfortunately not here. I'm not sure who that person was supposed to be, but I may have thought about it from the coast, but I was not here.
So, we will kindly strike Andy Grow's comments from the minutes of the last meeting. I'm sure that's just...
That's on page three, near the bottom.
I missed that.
I wasn't even gonna read it since I wasn't here, but then I saw my name. Then I kinda wanted to know what you guys were doing.
Yeah.
What's the line number?
Uh, 93 on page three.
Yeah, it looks like that was just a carryover. We can strike that from the record.
Good.
Thank you very much. So, with that edit, do we have any other comments, or omissions, or problems with the minutes from the last meeting? If not, I would entertain a motion with the edit. Excellent. Do we have a second? Thank you. So, we'll just vote by, with a voice vote. All those in favor of approving last month's minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Okay, minutes are approved, and I will sign those, I guess, down the road after we've made the change. So, next on the agenda is public comment, and this is an opportunity for citizens to speak on items that are not being considered on this evening's agenda. So if we have anybody here that would like to speak to the Planning Commission on the record on any item that's not on the agenda, please speak up now. And is there anybody online at all?
I have no online participants.
Okay. So, if no one wants to make public comment, then we will move into the next phase of the meeting, which is our public hearings. Our first public hearing is conditional use permit number 2503, a short-term vacation rental located on southeast Barbary Avenue. So, I will go through the proceedings according to Oregon land use law regarding a type-three quasi-judicial public hearing. This public hearing is the property located at 1620 Southeast Barbary Avenue. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission, and I now declare this public hearing open at 6:05 PM. As the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I am required to read the following statement. "The failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the planning commission and all the parties involved an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based upon that issue." So please direct all testimony this evening to the record, and the applicable criteria that are listed in the staff report, or two criteria in the Dallas Development Code that you believe applies to this decision. Applicable approval criteria are found in code in chapters 4.4, Conditional Use Permits, and chapter 2.2.120I, Short-Term Vacation Rental Special Use Standards. At this time, I'll ask if any members of the Planning Commission has a conflict of interest, a site visit, or an ex parte contact to declare regarding this land use application. Seeing none, we'll move forward. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with the staff report, followed by questions from the Planning Commission of staff. Thereafter, we'll hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team, for a total of 15 minutes, and this may be followed by questions from the planning commissioners. Thereafter, we'll hear from all other parties interested in presenting testimony on this item before the commission, and each person testifying will be provided 10, or five minutes, I'm sorry. We'll then provide the applicant five minutes for rebuttal if necessary. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the public hearing and ask the Planning Commission to deliberate, and then we'll ask if there's a motion in response to this proposal. In this case, the Planning Commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. At this time, we'll start with the staff report. May we have that, please, Chase?
Yes. So, as mentioned, this is a request for a short-term vacation rental. Those are a conditional use, and so that's what brings it to you today. The property is on southeast Barbary Avenue. It's here on the air photo. It is a townhouse structure, so common property wall between the property line, shared wall between the two units. But there's nothing in development code that says that you can't have a short-term vacation rental in a townhouse, so noteworthy, but not relevant to the approval criteria. The staff report, the written staff report, goes into some detail as to the actual written approval criteria in terms of the site being suitable for the use. Staff conclude that the applicable approval criteria are met. The site has adequate parking for the proposed use. There's no foreseeable impact to the community as a result of it. So, staff have recommended approval with five conditions. The first four are standard for these kinds of uses. Has to comply with building and fire code requirement, has to pay the transient lodging tax, has to comply with the total occupancy limit for these sorts of uses. Number five is a little bit special. The applicant shall designate a local representative to manage the vacation rental. That is a requirement in 2.2.120I. The written materials from the applicant did not state who is going to be the local manager, so condition of approval, they would need to specify that they have that local manager for the site. But other than that, staff are recommending approval of the conditional use permit. So, yeah, with those conditions.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, and I want to recognize that Commissioner Carol Ko-Wash is here, so let's make sure that she's noted as being present. Thank you, Carol. So, commissioners, do we have any questions of staff regarding this conditional use proposal for a short-term vacation rental?
Chase, you said this was a townhouse. Does that mean it's two separate residences?
So, that's correct. There are two residences within the structure. The structure straddles the shared property line, so we can see there's one entry door and a second entry door. There's a property line that runs between the two.
But they both have the same address?
No, they each have different addresses. Each of them has their own legal lot underneath. So it's a single-family type of dwelling, but it's attached.
The application states that the person applying is at the same address as what this is being applied for, and that's what's confusing me, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know that I have detail on that specifically.
They both say 1620, and also I noticed her phone number is 530. I don't know if that's an error, but...
What's that?
That is her.
530?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we don't really know if the person lives in the other one, who could potentially be the contact, or it's not really critical, but I was wondering if the applicant wasn't in the same one, or what?
So, the vacation rental standards, they would allow for a partial or full rental of the unit. Some Airbnb is the management people live in the unit, and you're renting a spare bedroom. Others, you're renting the whole house. So, our code doesn't really get into the difference on that, so.
And the property owners, whether or not they're local is not applicable to our decision. They just need to have, according to conditions, someone local to operate as the manager, so that there's someone to contact.
On-site, or at...
Correct. Some cities have owner occupancy requirements. We don't.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Are there any other questions, commissioners? Okay, seeing none, this is now where we will move on to hear from the applicant, but it's my understanding, as I walked in, that the applicant is not feeling well and is not here this evening. Is that correct? Okay. All right. A personal emergency is preventing the applicant from being here, so we won't hear from the applicant. So, this moves us on to the next part of the public hearing, where we will hear from those in attendance tonight that would like to address the Planning Commission on this item. So, if any of the folks that are here would like to testify before the Planning Commission on this conditional use permit application, now's your chance to speak up. I'm seeing shaking heads no. I'm seeing people looking down. Okay, thank you. So, no one is testifying on this item, and so now we would move on to any kind of rebuttal, and that's not necessary. Are there any final comments from staff, or from the city attorney regarding this application before we close the hearing and deliberate on a decision? Staff? So now I declare the public hearing closed at 6:15 PM. So now we get to deliberate on this topic. So, commissioners, do we have anything to speak on, on this issue? We've had a couple more of these recently than we have in the past, in my recollection, but this is a common thing. Does anybody have any discussion on this?
I was actually just curious on the applicant shall designate a local representative to manage the rental. Does it have to be anyone? Does it have to be, can it be the neighbor? Does it have to be like a rental management company? I'm just curious on that.
Yes, good question. So, the precise language that's in the code, and I believe it's on page nine. No, is it not in here? Yes, it's on page seven. Oh, I truncated it. That was, that was ill-advised of me. So, there is language about a representative who permanently resides within the Dallas urban growth boundary. I do believe there's also some language there that I truncated, unfortunately, that also speaks to within a certain distance around the urban growth boundary. So, it could be a professional property management company. It could be someone more informal, but it's someone who is able to respond to issues that may arise with the rental.
Any other questions? Okay, so let's move on. It's time for someone to make a motion on approval or denial of this conditional use permit. Can I entertain a motion from one of the planning commissioners? Thank you, Mary.
Second.
Competing second motions. So, Mr. Schulte seconded, so we've got a motion to approve the conditional use permit for vacation rental on, oh, I forgot. It doesn't...
1620.
1620, Southeast Barbary. I knew it, but I didn't have it in front of me, so I didn't say it out loud. So, now it's time to place a vote. So, the motion is to approve with the conditions. We'll do this by a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. The motion passes unanimously. An order reflecting this Planning Commission's decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant, and to all participants of the record within 10 business days. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the second public hearing, which is Conditional Use Permit number 2504. It's an oversized residential garage at 1460 West Ellendale Avenue. Again, this is a type-three quasi-judicial decision before the Planning Commission this evening, and I gotta go through the same routine as before. This public hearing is regarding property located at 1460 West Ellendale Avenue, and I now declare this public hearing open at 6:18 PM. As the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I again read the following statement. "Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the planning commission and the interested parties an adequate opportunity to respond to these issues precludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue." So please direct all testimony to the record, and the applicable criteria listed in the staff report, or two criteria in the Dallas Development Code you believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria are found in code chapters 4.4.040A, Conditional Use Permit Approval, and Dallas Development Code, Chapter 4.2.060A, Site Design Review Criteria, Site Design Review Approval Criteria. At this time, I'll ask planning commissioners if they have a conflict of interest, a site visit, or an ex parte contact to declare regarding this matter. Seeing none, we move on. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We begin with a staff report, followed by questions of the planning commissioners to staff. Thereafter, we'll hear from the applicant, including any members of the applicant's team, for a total of 15 minutes, and this may be followed by questions from the planning commissioners. Thereafter, we'll hear from all other interested parties in presenting testimony on this item before the commission, and each person testifying will be provided five minutes. We'll then give the applicant five more minutes to rebut if necessary. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the public hearing and ask the commission to deliberate, and then ask if there's a motion in response to the proposal. In this case, again, the Planning Commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. So at this time, we'll start with the staff report. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes. So, as you mentioned, this is a conditional use for an oversized shop, garage structure out on West Ellendale Avenue. As we see on the air photo here, the subject property is just west of James Howe Road on Ellendale, and it is a fairly sizable piece of property. It's 1.4 acres in size, so not your typical little city postage-stamped lot. The applicant is wanting to construct a detached garage shop, whatever you want to call it. It exceeds the 15-foot height limit for accessory structures, and exceeds the overall width limitation of 50% of the primary structure's width. This is permissible with a conditional use permit, so it's something that is allowed. It just has to go through this heightened level of review to evaluate impacts to the community, to the neighbors, make sure the site is adequate for the proposed use. In this case, given the substantial size of the lot, staff weren't able to identify any potential negative impacts. It appears that the site is adequate for the use, even with a larger structure on it. It doesn't come anywhere close to the total lot coverage limitation for the zone. Setbacks are well in excess of the minimum required by code, so it appears that there's adequate ability for the site to accommodate this use without negative impact on surrounding properties. There's even a fire hydrant immediately adjacent, because the private driveway that serves the dwellings back here has a fire hydrant there, which was a surprise to me when I found that out. I thought that was going to be a bit of a stumbling block, but it is not. So, as far as the Conditional Use Permit Approval Criteria go, this one looks like it can satisfy those. Conditional Use Permits, as was mentioned, also involve site design review when a new structure is involved, and so reviewing that, again, as I mentioned, setbacks, lot coverage, all of those can comply. So, it doesn't appear that there are any issues with the site design review. So, staff are recommending that the application be approved with two conditions of approval, that the appropriate building permits be obtained, and that the structure not be used for commercial purposes except for lawfully allowed home occupations, just to document that that is the situation. So, with that, that is my staff report. If you have questions, certainly happy to answer that. I will note that the applicant has provided us with some written testimony from the neighbors, so wanted to make sure that everyone had a copy of that. I think I borrowed your copy, so you can flip through that, sorry. But yeah, so it looks like there's letters of support from the neighbors supporting this proposal, so.
Thank you very much. So, this is the point where we get to ask questions of staff, and I'll just start off. I'm looking at the site plan that's in the submitted material here. It's 22 feet high at the high point of the roof. How much does it exceed the normal size limits for an accessory structure?
Yes. So, the ordinary height limit is 15 feet. With the Conditional Use Permit, you can go an additional five feet in height, but important to note that that is height as measured to the average height of the roof, not the very peak. So, from the plans that the applicant provided in the supplemental material, which is a little more detailed than the initial plans that were provided, the average height will be within that 20-foot expanded limit, even though the very peak of it will be, it looks like 22 feet. The average height will be within the 20-foot limit, so.
About the width, how far over is...
So, there's no specification for how far over the width limit you can go with the Conditional Use Permit. The language is pretty clear that you get an additional five feet of height, but as far as width, it's essentially unlimited. So, there's no specification in the code as far as how much additional width you get, so.
Standard width, like it's in relationship to the width of the primary structure?
Right, yeah. So, if you have, you know, a 40-foot wide house, you can only have a 20-foot wide garage. If you've got a 60-foot wide house, then you can have a 30-foot wide garage, right? So, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thank you very much.
Yep, so this would be in excess of that 50% limit.
Excellent.
What's the width of the existing building?
The existing building, I... Yes, yeah. It looks like they marked the existing dwelling as being 40 foot wide as facing the street, 80 foot wide if you're measuring it facing the shared access driveway. The code is a little less than clear as to how you would measure in this circumstance where it takes access off of the private drive. So, either way, however, a 60 by 60 building is in excess of the 50%, so.
Starting 60 by 60, I noticed in the staff report it says 30 by 30.
Oh, did I typo that? I might have...
It's an engineering thing.
I know.
What's that? It's the first finding.
Did I mess that up? Oopsie.
And 30 by 30, right there. It says 30 by 30, 60 by 60.
Says lot overage instead of lot coverage on that same line, just, that was the other threshold, as far as limitations on width.
Oh, yeah, okay. There was supposed to be a C in front of overage.
Well, either way, they have 1.4 acres, so lot coverage, or overage, not a concern.
I just wanted to make sure that got correct.
I just want to on record that it's not the chair that is criticizing the...
No criticism whatsoever. You know, we are not required to be perfect. It's the enemy of the game.
We know which one is correct.
Yes.
You either have 30 by 30, or 900 square feet, or 3,660 by 60. But since the plans made it real obvious that it was 60 by 60, that jumped out at me.
Okay, yes. What can I say? We're only human.
We're doing good. We just want, you know, that's why there's more than one of us here.
John, do you have a question?
Green spaces where all the new apartments are going in?
Correct, yes. So, not necessarily the terrain slopes pretty significantly in this area, and in fact, the apartments that have been approved there, the developer has requested administratively to split that into two phases due to some engineering concerns with part of the property because of the slopes. So, they want to be able to build the first half and then worry about the engineering for the second half later. So, because of the extent of that slope, I would not expect that height would be an issue in this circumstance.
That's a good question, John. Thanks. Any other questions of commissioners or staff on this conditional use? Carol? Okay.
Did the letters from the neighbors come in with the original app, or was it something we asked for later?
That was submitted separately, and it was submitted by the applicant.
That was a smart move. Thank you.
It's like the applicant did their homework and went around and made sure it was okay with...
And the applicant is present, so if you have further questions for the applicant, they are here to be able to speak, so.
Steph, thank you.
I've been through this a time or two.
Me too. All of us have, yes. Thank you. So, now we move on to hearing from the applicant. So, applicants, you're present. Why don't you come on up? Someone, what we ask you to do is sit here, and so that we can pick up your voice on the microphone, state your name and your address, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could we to the right so I can see the property to the west? Yes, well, right there. Perfect, thank you.
My name is David Sutherland. I live at 1460 West Ellendale, Dallas, Oregon 97338, with my dear wife, Susan, back there, and so she's here to she'll make sure I tell them the tell them it right. Just as a little background for us, we've lived at 15335 West Ellendale since 1991. So it is the old farmhouse right here in this property, and we have vineyards that we planted in 99 and 2008 on that property and we purchased 1460 in 2022. And now we would like to part with our vineyard property, sell that property. And our challenge is, we have about, I think, 8,500 square feet or so of storage space, those buildings to the north of the house I planted, pointed to. And so we're gonna, we're gonna divest ourselves of a whole bunch of assets when we do this downsize thing. But we won't get rid of everything, and that's why we are coming to to apply for the ability to build this this storage structure. Thank you, Chase, for working with us on this project. Been very cool. I did visit with each of the three neighbors on our street. So this is our home. This is 1460 here. We plan to build the storage building here. And so I visited with the three neighbors that we shared this driveway with, it's really not the street. And they have as as testimony, by by their signed statements, they have no issues with what we're asking for. In fact, Mitch Haynesworth, who is almost directly west of our house, he said, 22 feet, he said, my house is taller than that. And then he asked me, he says, what are you gonna three story apartment buildings that are going in immediately to your east, they're gonna be looking down on your 22 foot roof? So anyway, we we think it's a reasonable expectation that we should be able to move ahead with this. It's interesting that the west side of that common driveway is county and our side is city, so. That.
I was gonna ask exactly where the city limit line is, and I forgot to ask Chase, so thanks for clarifying.
That is, that is it. And and we are surrounded with wonderful neighbors. So each of the neighbors have said no concerns with the 60 by 60, the 60 foot width or the 22 foot height. And and Mitch was asking me, what are you gonna do about those? You know, did the did the apartment buildings have to go through the same process? Because they're gonna be taller than you. And Chase, I think, addressed the issue about adequate parcel size. I I talked to Lori and was asking her about what are the average city lot sizes? And she says, well, that's all over the board, but 6,000 square feet is the minimum for a duplex. So I said, well, I'll use that as, so we have, you know, ours is 64,000 square feet is our parcel. And so we could put 10 duplexes on it, just as a as a frame of reference. No, I'm not saying that we have, we do not have any intention of applying to put duplexes on that 64.
That's a different application.
That's a different, yeah, whole different, whole different ballgame. And in terms of that width, the house and the building would be, the house is 80 feet, building 60, so that'd be 140 feet total total width. And I'm looking at the frontage being on the driveway. Because really, even though our address is West Ellendale, we we don't face Ellendale and you can you know, in the in the this time of year before the leaves, the trees leaf out from Ellendale, you can almost get a glimpse of our of our property, but it's elevated, so it's not even really visible from from West Ellendale. So of that square footage on the, or I'm sorry, linear footage on the driveway, that property line, I think it's 316 feet. And we, those two buildings would take up less than 45% of that. So anyway, it, we think it fits well on on that parcel. And I think, I tried to go through the the sections that address conditional use permits, and I think I've addressed those, but. How can I?
All right, well, this is where, thank you, sir. Welcome to town. We appreciate you moving down the road.
Thank you.
Coming into the city.
What, what, culture shock. We we now live, I think, I looked it up on the city map, I think it's like 455 feet from our other property line. So, yes.
If I recall what you said, your address is now only two thirds as large as your previous address.
That's right. And my neighbor's address.
Still has six digits.
Yeah, he's got your, or or five digits. Yeah, I think it is, yes.
All right, well, planning commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant before we move on?
I just want to thank you for a very thorough handwritten, nicely well-written architectural engineering handwritten explanation. I found a lot of good information in here that's helpful, so thank you for taking the time.
Thank you very much. It reminded me of the eighth grade where we did three view orthographic bridge.
Wow.
Lafting class.
Excellent.
It was fun.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
You have the long driveway that the neighbors share. Do you have some kind of agreement about easement usage or?
That that is part of the Edwards property parcel. So that driveway actually belongs to these fine people that are here. And in our deeds, it's it's laid out that we share responsibility for maintaining.
So if something happened with the road, say with excess usage, you guys would agree together to to deal with it? Okay, one of those things.
Yes, yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, all turn around in our driveway.
Thank you, that helps.
Any other questions, commissioners, for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Stand by. If anyone has testimony, you'll have an opportunity to speak to anything that gets brought up, okay? You're welcome. Not at all, not at all. So now we'll hear from those in attendance tonight who would like to address the commission on the item. So if you'd like to testify on this application, raise your hand. Seeing none, and we already heard that there's no one on the phone to testify. So we will move on. There's no testimony to rebut. Thank you very much, applicant. And are there any final comments from staff or the city attorney on this proposal before I close the city hearing? Or the public hearing, sorry?
None for me.
Not, Chase?
Nothing for me.
Okay. So I now declare this public hearing closed at 6:39 PM. So commissioners, this is our opportunity to deliberate upon this topic. What do we think?
To approve the conditional use permit with the conditions stated in the staff report.
Except there aren't any conditions in the staff report that I can find. Am I looking at the wrong one?
For four.
Oh, there it is. Okay, yeah, no.
Standard conditions.
Yeah, okay. I was looking at the next one, didn't have any conditions, so.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So now we'll now we'll vote on the motion, and the motion is to approve the conditional use permit for the oversized accessory structure on the subject property. We'll go by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. An order reflecting this planning commission's decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within 10 business days. Thank you very much, folks. And again, we really appreciate a thorough application and presentation.
Good job.
Excellent.
And good luck and enjoy. Love to.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to our third public hearing of the this evening, and this is a variance request number 2502, a residential setback variance at 1072 Southwest Cherry Street. Again, this is a type three quasi judicial land use decision. And it is subject to the following. This public hearing is regarding property located at 1072 Southwest Cherry Street. This is an official public hearing before the City of Dallas Planning Commission, and I now declare this public hearing open at 6:42 PM. As the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I will again read the following statement. The failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the planning commission and interested parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based upon that issue. So please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria listed in the staff report on this application or to the criteria in the Dallas Development Code you believe applies to the decision. The applicable approval criteria are found in Dallas Development Code, Chapter 5.1.040B, a Class B variance approval criteria. I'll ask at this time if any members of the planning commission has a conflict of interest, a site visit, or an ex parte contact to declare. Seeing none, we move on. This is a hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with the staff report, followed by questions for the staff from the planning commission. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant if present, including any members of the applicant team for a total of 15 minutes, and this may be followed by questions from the planning commissioners. Thereafter, we'll hear from all other inch, all other parties interested in presenting testimony on this variance request before the planning commission, and each person providing testimony will be provided five minutes. We'll then provide the applicant five minutes to rebut if necessary. And after we've heard all testimony, I will close the public hearing and ask the planning commission to deliberate. And then ask if there's a motion in response to the proposal. In this case, again, a type three decision, the planning commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. So we'll start with the staff report. So Chase, maybe we have the staff report, please?
Yes, so as you mentioned, the location is 1072 Southwest Cherry Street. There is a typo on page 30 of your packet. The staff report lists it as being Southeast Cherry. However, the public notice that was issued, a copy of which is on page 32, correctly lists Southwest Cherry, so the public notice was correct and the address is Southwest. So zooming in on the air photo here, we can see that the property is here in the southwest quadrant at Southwest Cherry and 11th Street. And the part of the development here that is in question, if we go to the street view, is this covered porch that is on the street facing side of the structure. The applicant is wanting to enclose that porch and make it into a an actual inhabitable room. I believe it was going to be a laundry room, if I'm recalling correctly. But the footprint of the overall structure isn't changing. It's just that the the porch, the covered porch would become a room. The issue is that setbacks, which are measured to the wall of the building when it faces the street, are 15 feet from the property line. When measured to the front of a covered porch, we allow a reduction of that 15 foot setback by up to eight feet. When you enclose a porch, that would then move the point at which you're measuring the setback. And so the enclosed porch in this instance would no longer meet the setbacks, even though the actual footprint of the structure isn't changing simply by nature of the use of that square footage having changed, so. It's not really the sort of situation that the code is written to really envision. It's also important to note that it's not a a front porch, it's a side porch. It happens to face a street and so has the the street facing setbacks. But it's not like the, I mean, you can see here, it's it's not the front porch of of the house, so it's a little bit of a unique beast in in that respect as well, and so staff report goes into some greater level of detail regards to the variance approval criteria. The the change in setbacks is unfortunately greater than the 20% adjustment that would be allowable administratively, which is what elevates it to the Class B variance for review by the planning commission. But staff believe that the the approval criteria for a Class B variance could be met in in this in this instance. It doesn't really appear to impact the neighborhood at all. The code section doesn't really envision the particular scenario that we're facing. There's no other conflicting policies or procedures in the in the the city codes. And there's no foreseeable harm to adjacent property owners or the public. And so as as a result of that, staff are recommending approval of the variance application. We do currently have an open building permit application for this. That's what first brought it to the attention of planning as not conforming outright to the development code provisions, which is then what brought it to to you for resolving of that situation. But yeah, it's kind of the the report that I've got for you, short and sweet. It's a covered porch that they want to make into a laundry room, so. Don't know what more I can say on that.
Thank you very much, Chase. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff on the application? Any questions that I had, he have been answered, so thank you.
Possibility that the street is gonna be widened at some point in the future, or is this something that just won't be an issue?
So the the street is already wider than our normal standard 50 foot right of way. It's 60 foot in this area. If we go down a little bit further, we can see that there is a sidewalk a bit further down, and that is in line more or less with the existing fence, so to the extent that the sidewalk may be extended in the future, it wouldn't conflict with the the structure in any way, so.
This is the enclosure to the fence.
So looking at the site plan that was provided, it's on page 37 of your packet. The porch is 11 and a half feet to the property line.
Remember, the property line is not necessarily gonna be the edge of the street, too, so, right?
It's trying to figure out. So if the sidewalks go in and they're two or three feet from the fence, then you're now four or five feet from the back of the house.
Well, so the the sidewalks, they they, the sidewalks would be in the right of way. So you'd still be.
Stand that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Assume the fence is probably along the property line.
That would be the logical inference.
My assumption, too.
I'm not a surveyor, so I can't confirm that, but that would be my assumption.
Just a guess by looking at the plans and it wouldn't be in the right of way, or at least it shouldn't be in the right of way.
It shouldn't be, and the fact that it. It shouldn't be. And the fact that it does seem to, you know, not conflict with the future extension of the sidewalk seems to make me think that that's the case. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for staff commissioners? Okay. Well, let's move on. Is our applicant here this evening? Okay. Thank you very much. So this is our opportunity. Applicant, step up. And uh, state your name and your address as if we don't know it already. And anything that you'd like to add to, to Chase's staff report, let us know. Thanks.
Trenton Johnson. Um, I'm here with my lovely wife, Janay. We reside at 1072 Southwest Cherry Street. This is actually my family home that we've lived in since 97. Uh, we moved here from Alaska and I think it was a, I want to say 1943 or so house. When we purchased it and um, my father uh, rebuilt the whole thing. Um, it was the last approved set drawings that were handwritten by the county.
Wow, okay.
Purchased it from them and are looking to raise our family, our little family there and we just want to make a little extra room in the, the house by putting in a laundry room. That is correct. Um, and.
Thank you very much. That's it. Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address the planning commission on this item?
You better not because he just got approved.
And we already know that there's nobody on the phone. See, this, this is what happens when we have a light agenda with, with easy applications. So we get a little, we sort of have a little too much fun. So.
I wasn't meant to intimidate you. Feel free.
So seeing that there is no one to testify on this application, we'll move on. Um, there was no testimony, so there's no need for the applicant to rebut any testimony. So are there any final que- comments from staff or the city attorney on this application? Thank you very much. So I now declare this public hearing closed at 6:53 PM. So now commissioners, we get to deliberate on this topic by the, on this topic by us. So does anybody have any questions, any statements on this? Seems pretty straightforward to me. Seeing none, Andy?
We're going to have three up, three down, but that's my act.
Okay, okay. Well, uh, again, this is typical older home in a mature neighborhood that actually preexists the neighborhood. So I, I don't see a, any issues with this. I appreciate you coming in and going through the process with our staff. So thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, this, this is, it's a pleasure when we have people that present good applications and we can make solid decisions based on good, good information. So thank you. Um, so do we have a motion on this uh, ver- uh, variance application?
I don't think there are any commissions.
I don't think so. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the variance request number 2502 on the setback on the Cherry Street or on the side. What is the name of the street on the side?
11th.
11th? Okay. Uh, on the 11th seat try, street side. So we will vote on a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The motion passes unanimously. An order reflecting the planning commission's decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within 10 business days. Thanks very much for putting yourselves through the process and coming in this evening. Okay, so we will move on in our agenda now to uh, agenda item number six, Commissioner comments and future agenda items. So you folks that came to present your applications, you can certainly hang around and observe the local process or you, you know, you're not under any obligation to stick out the rest of the meeting. So there I, I, I don't mind. Usually folks run out without being invited. So.
You for coming.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner comments and future agenda items. I'll get, I'll get this started. Um, we had a email discussion between myself, Commissioner Schulte, city staff and uh, and uh, the city manager about a future agenda item to discuss ad, an ad hoc committee concept to uh, form a committee amongst ourselves to go over best practices for planning commissioners to examine uh, uh, land use proceedings in Oregon and to just basically improve our knowledge on, on planning commission uh, uh, process. And uh, and to uh, perhaps take a look at other communities of a similar size and similar demographic to see if we might be able to improve upon our knowledge base in our task as planning commissioners and to make our local jurisdiction operate more smoothly and efficiently. So it's at the behest of Commissioner Schulte. So I'll ask you and, and just, we've made an agreement that uh, the chair is going to be a little more uh, involved in taking a look at uh, planning commission agendas in the future as prescribed by state law. So we, we've had some discussions about uh, improving uh, how we do what we do and understanding what we do a little bit better, particularly when we get into situations like we had last month where we had kind of a a sticky uh, uh, item on our agenda that was a type four that involved us recommending a, a and this is just an example of where we might be able to expand our knowledge base a little bit. There was a type four decision to uh, make a amendment to the comprehensive plan and advance it to the uh, city council for the lock real node. And uh, so we're going to do that in May. Uh, unless something comes in that, that's going to swamp that agenda, we are going to set aside 30 or 40 minutes in May to have a discussion about setting up that ad hoc midi, uh, ad hoc committee. But since John, it was at your impetus, the, the you, you uh, have a desire to do this. Is there anything you'd like to add as to what we'd like to accomplish when we have this discussion next month?
Uh, very well said. That's what I've been after with one, maybe ca- not caveat, but add on. In addition to looking at other like sized cities in Oregon, planning commissions and their best practices, which are very different as you go around the state. The, the other part is DLCD, which is the department that created the, these commissions and their best, their suggested best practices for us would be part of that as well. And, and the simple point is let's just look around to see if there's anything we could do that would be a better service for our city. It's that simple.
Sure. Totally get it. And I've also have an understanding that uh, uh, city manager Brian Latta is going to be in attendance at next month's meeting. Uh, at least that's the plan. So we'll have a good audience for that discussion to have our CEO of the city here to participate in that. And it's not going to be, we're not going to be making any decisions or doing anything official. It's just going to be discussion and education and maybe any decision that we do make would be to decide to maybe form a subcommittee and have some meetings and have some discussion outside of a formal planning commission meeting uh, going forward. So that's the idea. I wanted to put that out there first and foremost, and I appreciate John, your, your proactive uh, uh, stance on making what we do work better for the citizens of the city of Dallas.
Our point presentation that I put together, just so I don't wander around. It would be helpful to do that, just to get the conversation going. And then I list what would be, what we, we should discuss. So to put some structure to it. So.
I I'll, I'll make this offer. Uh, I, maybe John, you and I in the next couple, three weeks before then, before the next agenda comes out, we can have a discussion. If not in person, on the phone, so that we can discuss your ideas. We can coordinate with staff to make sure they have your PowerPoint. Uh, I don't, we don't know exactly what the agenda is going to look like for next month. But we will uh, uh, commit ourselves to 30 or 40 minutes to have a discussion. So you can count on hearing from me between now and the, the next agenda coming out. So we can talk about it a little bit to make it go smoothly. We never know how many people are going to be in the room when we show up for these things. So we want to be on our front foot as we have this discussion. So.
We go through this presentation or process to talk about where the law has changed and how we look at land use and where the city has changed it for us. Because some things the city has decided to make the decision without us. And some, the law has took it out, has taken it out of our hands. And I'm not clear where those lines are. So we've had a couple of changes recently. Where did it happen? Was it with the city or was it with the law that changed recently? So that's still a little foggy for me.
The interesting part of this is that I've been a passionate about doing this for two years. And in, but have been quiet because I want to learn how this works before I do it. I had, I had it clear in my mind where I thought we would want to go as a commission before SB 1537. And after that, to me is all the more reason for us to talk to our peers. Cause there's a fog on my part of what changed, what should have changed. So, so it's a good point. And I think it's uh, more relevant than ever post 1537.
I know where the line is, so I don't step over it.
Nothing else for us to have those conversations above and beyond the, the routine that we're having. So thank you.
Bet, you bet. Well, thank you. And I look forward, again, I'll touch base with you offline and uh, we'll make sure that we're organized with staff to have a, a, a good discussion that hopefully will lead into more discussions beyond next month and we can continue to educate ourselves. Cause you're right, the, the law and it's continued, the, the legislature is in session right now. And there are proposals uh, in play that uh, affect land use decisions uh, specifically around uh, residential and, and the need that all Oregon communities have for additional housing. Uh, I heard a presentation just today at my job uh, in Benton County talking about how uh, Corvallis, which is the, you know, uh, the county seat of Benton County uh, is the number one rent burdened community in the entire state. Now, I would have not guessed, I would have guessed Corvallis would have been on my list, but I wouldn't have guessed it was number one. And that, those issues then trickle into the areas that are in the jurisdiction that I work for, which is the county, which includes Philomath, Adair, Monroe. I mean, so the issues that you're fa- with that, that are faced in the city regarding land use also have an impact on folks that live on our urban growth boundary fringe, our urban fringe, like our applicant here this evening that, you know, moved down the road a quarter mile and found themselves out, out of county jurisdiction and now in city jurisdiction. So I think it's a good discussion to have and I, and I commend Commissioner Schulte for for, for his persistence. And I, and I think that we've got the ear of uh, upper management here at the city of Dallas and Brian's going to be here next month and we'll be able to have a good discussion. And probably more after that. I think it's great. Anybody else have anything that we'd like to discuss this evening? Uh, commissioners comments or any future agenda items that anybody else might want to bring up this evening before we adjourn?
So looked from the minutes I wasn't here at the last meeting, you had a a topic tabled, LA 2502, but it wasn't on the agenda. Is that coming back some later point?
Yes, uh, currently we're expecting that that will be on the agenda for uh, May. At the moment, it's one of the only things on the agenda for May. So.
Just out of curiosity, procedurally, on nights like this, when we have to me a very light agenda and to me, these are, they come before the commission for technical reasons. Is it legal to, I don't know how to say this, not take a vote before we go through the whole process? Now, if we had no intention of um, contesting anything, is there a way to shortcut some of this before we go?
Public hearing, so I don't see how.
It's all due process. Our city attorney, why don't you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Greg Goble. This actually, I've been to a few city council meetings, but my first planning commission meeting. So um, yeah, so I work at Sherman Sherman Johnny in Hoyt in town. I uh, as of last Monday, Lane Shatterly formerly retired, so she asked me, but um, I should be the point person for the planning commission going forward.
So I'd be good to be there for the presentation part. Some of the discussion, it seems like there's an ex parte as far as like deliberating or discussing before we meet or discussing amongst your peers. I have concerns about that because there's going into a meeting, I don't want to put on, like have any indication that there's been a previous conversation or indication or consensus. Um, so I think that might be good.
Answer your question. There really, that's why, you know, we've got our script and we go through it. Everyone is afforded due process and that includes uh, anybody that's in the notification area that surrounds uh, a, a subject property that applies for a land use decision. It's kind of like a, uh, it, it's kind of like a, a court case where you still got to jump through the hoops in order to make it legal. And, and again, if we discovered or invented some sort of a way to, to shortcut some of these things, uh,
It gets sued?
We, well, we would get appealed and it would be uh, unexpensive and time consuming and embarrassing situation for the city to find themselves in. So.
We just have to go back to the way it was supposed to be.
Yeah. In my, in my 20 years plus experience as a land use planner in Oregon, I have only seen bad things happen when official decisions are reached through some sort of a shortcut. So I think we're kind of stuck with it. So and it keeps us, it keeps us on, on the uh, on the straight and narrow or between the guardrails or whatever cliche we want to use, but.
They base it on what was discussed. So if we leave something out that's imperative, then they have a cause when they maybe didn't have one otherwise.
Yeah, I mean, part of it is creating a record. So just getting it out there. Um, as you mentioned, that's important for appeals.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else have any, any comments uh, or future agenda items? Uh, that's the plan.
Yay.
I think they're, they're, they, they can say, you know, I, I, when we moved it from Tuesday to Thursday, to me, that was, it changes kind of my, my personal schedule quite a bit. And I think the concession was we move it to Thursday for good reasons that were, were given to me. It has to do with notification and uh, publication of notice for hearings and expense. And I think the concession was we'll also move the meeting up to six o'clock, which I think was, is appropriate and long overdue. So.
Helpful.
So that's where we're at. So with that, um, staff, is there any comments before we adjourn?
Yes, uh, so we have some new policy coming down from the top. Um, so the number four item on today's agenda, the public comment. Um, we won't be uh, having those on our agenda going forward. Um, so just be aware of that change coming up. Yeah. Yeah, so that's a decision coming out of our admin office. It's honestly probably more relevant to some of the other boards and committees that have had some interesting experiences of late. Planning commission hasn't quite had the issue that some of the other boards and committees have. But sort of across the board, they're removing the public comment from everything except city council, so.
That's all above board regarding?
My understanding is that legal counsel has reviewed that and cleared that.
Do you know what I was going to say?
I just, I I've been doing this along, long enough to start reading your mind. It's it's one of my planner skills.
That's it. Okay, so we won't be, what what do we do if someone comes in and is more familiar with the old system?
They'll go to city council.
That would probably be.
That might be it. We could potentially also have them submit something to you in writing. But yeah, it it will at least be easier to communicate to the public that, hey, this is not the time to be testifying on the agenda items. We've had that be an issue a few times in the past inadvertently, so at least it's a little cleaner from the the communications standpoint.
When does this go into effect?
Immediately.
Immediately?
So, yes. We're also going to be, as you alluded to, more interactive with the chairs of the different committees, especially planning commission, because we've been kind of bad at that at making sure that you're involved with the the assembly of the agenda. Some things like the public hearings that are just, they are what they are, but making sure that you're more in the loop on on the assembly of the agendas.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
I just want to add one point of clarification on that question. So we are just removing a public comment for items not on the agenda. However, if we do have folks show up that want to bring a novel issue to the planning commission, get feedback, present a question that you might want to take up and source to city council, have them reach out to staff and we'll put them on the agenda. We'll give them their own block. So we're not blocking people from bringing things to us. We're just going to formalize it a bit, make sure it's on the agenda. Other public comment periods to comment on the agendas is still in place.
Well, we don't have a a culture in Dallas that encourages creative public comment like I've seen in some other places. So that that being said, I've got some good anecdotes on that, but where folks will just take their public comment to recite poetry, perhaps perform songs, you know, I mean, three minutes, five minutes. I mean, it's it's your time, so.
I I have yet to see interpretive dance as a method of land use testimony.
So I appreciate that. So thank you for the clarification. And now, you know, moving forward, if folks haven't picked up on that, we'll be able to at least give them direction on how they can be heard in a more appropriate format, the public comment at the planning commission. So thank you.
So are we going to make sure that this goes out on the website in different methods so they know that has changed?
I don't know what method admin is intending to publicize this. I know it is something that they have discussed with our communications person. But I don't know what ultimately they concluded on, if it's going out of the website or Facebook or.
They get to another committee.
Right. So, yeah, I I imagine they've discussed that. I I don't know what mechanism. One would hope.
Thanks, folks. So it's 7:15, we've been through some, we've been through the wringer a few times in the last several months. So to have a a well-run, good meeting, I think was refreshing. So thank you very much for your service to our city and welcome to our new city attorney. And I'm going to adjourn the meeting until May the 8th. Thank you very much.